Good evening, and I will call this meeting to order for Wasika Public Schools Board of Education. Today is Thursday, April 20th, 2023, at 5:30 PM. We are in the central building, second floor conference room, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's continue. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'm over. Approve the agenda.
I'll second that. Thank you. First and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Moving on then to recognition of visitors. We don't have anyone here in person tonight. Did we receive any emails? Okay. Just a reminder, we do always have an open forum as part of our regular meetings. So our meeting that is on the third Thursday every month, anyone is welcome to come and speak, or you can send an email to wasikadistrict@gmail.com, and we will read it at a future meeting. Moving on to payment of claims. I had the privilege of reviewing claims this month, and so I make a motion to recommend action of payment for these claims. Accounts payable for the month of March in the amount of $1,696,596.30. Payroll for the month of March, $837,688.62. And dental for the month of February, $17,847.89.
Second.
Thank you. First and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Moving on, can I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second. First and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. All right, moving on then to our information items, beginning with our principal's report from Mr. John Hutmyer from WIS.
So as we include with our building reports here for this year, as we continue moving through, getting you all a little snapshot of what's happening in our buildings and sharing some of the great work our staff is doing with our kids. So John Hutmyer is here tonight to share what's happening at Wasika Intermediate School, and looking forward to hearing what's the great things that are happening over there at WIS.
Thanks Superintendent Hutspeth, and thank you Board for all you do to support our kids in this community. And I'm trying to do a brief synopsis of our schools. There's a lot to be proud of, but we'll go through, and if there's questions, go ahead and feel free to ask those as we go, but we'll move through at a rate that probably is a little faster, so go ahead and slow me down if you need to as we go through. But just starting the year, we start, last year we ended with 368 students, started our year at 364, and we're currently at 358. That's pretty normal. We'll probably add a couple back by the end of the year, and it usually ends up kind of about where we started, but that is our current numbers as far as enrollment. We break down, are you following my lead on that? Perfect Caitlin. So we break down, you know, pretty much like the rest of the district, but you know, white and Hispanic Latino make up 90% of our population, and then all the other groups there kind of finish out that 10%, and so pretty standard for Wasika. This is what our staff looks like. We have 30 full-time in the building and then for teachers, and eight shared, and that's in lots of different capacities, so don't make too much of the, that's a full eight, that's not, that would be .3, .2, .1, but eight other people that come into our building to support our kids. And then the three clerical or myself, or excuse me, the two that I have in the office as well as one in media, but two custodians, and so, and their food service is a little off too, but we have four individuals that work for us, not necessarily full-time. And so, but just trying to give you an idea of what makes up our building and who's around our kids during the day. Our mission is all students learn and to create positive relationships. We know that that's very important to allow kids to learn, and then we're taking kids from being dependent learners to independent learners, and hopefully as they leave our building, they're ready to take on a secondary environment with the junior high. And so, and so our mission coincides with where our vision goes, and our vision coincides with the district's strategic plan. And so, in that top area, the communication and student family connectiveness is something that we always want to continuously improve, and so we kind of set up some measures for us to evaluate how we're doing with that for communicating with our stakeholders. Standards alignment is something you have to have, what are kids going to learn? And so our teacher, and making sure that every teacher understands what that looks like and that we're aligning that across the board. How we know if they're learning, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later, and our student achievement is always important, kind of our goals on a year-to-year basis. We want as many kids to be able to learn, and that we want them learning what we're intending for them to learn. They learn, but hopefully it's intended at the beginning of the year. And so, and that's not only in the curricular areas, the math and the reading and all of the subject areas, but also just how to be human beings. And so we know that's important as we kind of get kids back in school full-time, which is thankfully kind of the past has been not having them here, and they're back with us, and just trying to get them used to what it takes to be a human being as they grow up, the grit and pushing through difficult times, and then dealing with other human beings. And so that goes down to the bottom with the student experience and the student support, how we support kids to get there, whether it be their mental health, their social emotional skillset, and as well as how they apply that to learning, which everything wraps around what we want them to learn in the academics, but all those other areas allow us to get there. So if you look at the next, we have a couple belief statements that kind of align with what I said before. This is that piece with, "We are a transitional school. We're taking them from where things are not spoon-fed, but it's more rote in nature, and they're learning how to do computation as well as reading from the basics up to starting to read for comprehension." And so we're hoping that by the time they leave us in sixth grade and going into seventh, that those skillsets are there so that they can succeed there. The academic is comprehensive, challenging, and purposeful. We try and integrate multiple curriculums and try and make it as real as possible, and it's standards-based in nature, based on what the state deems we should be teaching. That's what we try and put in front of the kids in the way of learning targets. Health and well-being is important. We know that kids need to be well-rounded, but they also have to have a sense of belonging and wanting to come to school. And so with that, you have to have a safe environment for both individual and the community setting. And so that's that part about trying to make better human beings, and that leads into character in what we try and do there. I think our staff has a really good feel for understanding that this is more than just teaching skills, it's about teaching kids how to be members of Wasika and contributing to society, and that comes more than, well, the number one is that you're able to do something, and that's where the learning comes from, but also that you're actually understanding that you have a role as a citizen. And so we do our best to try and create that character in our kids as we go through. Are they learning? Which is always, this is our, as we go through the year, this is our number one, you know, day-to-day observation and evidence of student learning, which we call formative assessment. Standards-based grading is how we assess the individual learning targets. Learning targets kind of is a breakdown of the multiple standards, and so there's always more learning target, most of the time there's more learning targets in particular standards, and so we break that down and try and grade those areas that are important. And then, you know, we take a breath as we go through the year and say, okay, NWA allows us to see how our whole school is progressing, and NWA kind of prepares us to see how we're going to, how we're going to do with MCA testing, which is how we're evaluated by the state. And so, so I talked a little bit more about NWA testing here, and it's covered up by Elizabeth up there, but what that says is NWA, well, you, yeah, okay, but NWA with the WIS math, the people that came to the DAC, this is actually straight out of Brooke's presentation, but I wanted you to see that as a staff, we look at whether we're making, the diamond shape there is grade level norms based on, that's NWA, this is what they think you should be making. Not always perfectly accurate, but it gives us kind of something to shoot for, and so our shaded areas shows how in math we're doing, and so whether we're keeping up with what they intend or what they predict growth should be. And we always want to be higher than that, but it doesn't always work that way. And so when we look at that, we look at this both individually, but we also, by individual student, but we also look at it, do we have areas in our curriculum that we need to do a little bit differently to be more successful with math or reading? And if you go to the next one there, this is kind of where we break down, this is what we have. And so if you look at that pie chart over there, blue and green means that, yep, they're the low-hanging fruit as far as proficiency, they are most likely, or they're very likely to pass the MCA test. What we go to work on is trying to move red to yellow and yellow to green, and yellow to green or blue. And so those are kids that we need to see what is the deficiency that maybe is keeping them back and try and push them in the right direction to increase that blue and green. And we're spending lots of time trying to figure that out this year. What's interesting, you're going to see this, as you saw the growth on that last slide, but our proficiency levels to start with kids coming in is lower in math than it is in reading, and we're looking at that and trying to figure out what that means to us. But we know that we have work in both areas to try and get to 100%, which is the goal. But the reality is not that, but we, that's what we're trying to go, trying to gain as we kind of make our goals for the year. And so if we slide down to the reading, the reading is the next one, and this is what I meant by that, is you see those grade level norms and that projected growth, and we fall short in a couple of grade levels, and so that's actually not the worst thing in the world for us because it allows us to take a deeper look. It motivates you a little bit more when you're saying, what is going on here versus everything is just perfect and we're meeting those projections. This gives us a chance to dig in in our PLCs to say, is there a curricular need? And we know that we're in a major reading rework right now. We're bringing Amplify in and working with our, for our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. So I'm very interested to see how that impacts our growth in the future. And we still need to look at these individual kids because they are individual kids, but this is more of a whole, a whole school look to see how we're doing. And so if you slide to the next one, this is what I meant by, you see that our immediate proficiency is higher, the blue and green is bigger in our reading area, but we still, same concept, we want to move red to yellow and yellow to green. And so, and we're trying to do that through kids identified in intervention programs as well as what we're doing whole group in the classrooms. And so this next, the next slide, I just, I want to show, this is NWA's achievement versus growth chart, and so just to help you read it, so, because I've gotten to see it a lot, the box and the plus is just reading. Reading is the square and plus is the math, but this would be one individual class that we have in the building. And so one teacher and who he or she has in their class. And so what we love about this is it shows which kids, and this is from fall to winter, NWA growth. And so, you know, anyone up in that green area, high achievement, high growth, things are going really well for that particular kid in those subject areas. We look at, it's not just all about proficiency for us, and so we want everyone over in the yellow and the green, and preferably we want them up in the green, but we understand that when we're taking a kid from low achievement, we need to actually have high growth. And so that orange becomes a really important spot for us, and if you go orange enough, that orange pops over into the yellow or the green or the high achievement. But for certain kids, it's going to take a lot of high growth in order for them to make it back into high achievement. And so I just wanted you to see that we look at things differently, and the NWA provides us a lot of opportunities to look. And so the teacher's next step is taking that square that's in the middle of the pink and drilling down into that kid and finding out what particular standard areas they're struggling with. And so that allows us to hit more targeted interventions with that student with the hopes that we start moving them up. But I'm hoping for kind of like a softball toss from that pink, a softball toss out into the green. And sometimes if they fall far enough into the yellow, we have to figure out why they're not motivated to make that growth if they're high achieving, but we want to move them up in that direction. And you kind of see that showing as you go across with this particular classroom, that kids are moving that direction up towards the green. Does that make sense, what I was talking about, or a shot of a cannon or a softball going from the pink up into the green? So that's what we're shooting for, and we hope that we can catch it in the green and not slip back down into the yellow. So, but if we do, that's another story. And so, you know, is it a kid that's struggling with mental health, or is there something that they're just not motivated, we're not pushing them hard enough? And so those are all questions that we ask as a staff through our professional learning communities and just day-to-day grade level meetings. And so, so that just shows you a little bit of how we approach that. And then if you go to the next, this is the quick look, and so I'm assuming you all haven't been following my Twitter closely, and so you're going to have to look at some pictures again if you have been, but I just wanted to show you, like, culture is important, and it's hard to actually speak it. And so we go through, and I'm just showing you, this is the, this is kind of a year in the life of a WIS student, and it is not comprehensive. It's highlights. And so we saw the marching band, and this is the garden club, we have a garden north, hold up just a sec Caitlin, the garden, you don't have to show it again, but that garden thing is neat because we're growing things, and the kids are harvesting, and they're bringing to farmers market, and then they sell, and it's self-sustaining to buy seeds for next year. Really cool is from a business standpoint too. This is celebrating staff, and so amazing kitchen staff, but we do that for all our groups. But the big thing for that is kids understanding that they have adults helping them and showing gratitude for them. Turkey Bingo is a hit every year before Thanksgiving. We call out Turkey Bingo, and kids get to gobble down to the office to pick up their prize. This is PE going over to our rink, but just this is showing that we're trying to use every resource and to give kids experiences. There's a lot of kids that don't make it to the rink, and we're giving them a chance to learn that, hopefully that they'll use it. Band concerts, and this is one that happens in the winter, but Mr. Brandon with his fifth and sixth grade bands. These are unique. This is our soccer. This has become a huge hit, and I've had more parents tell me, my kid is excited to come to school because they want to participate. So this goes on for about a month where kids play each other in soccer, fourth versus fourth, fifth versus fifth, and it teaches them a lot about, for a lot of kids, they haven't competed enough to know how to lose, and so we've learned that, oh, all of a sudden, we got to teach kids that you can compete hard and you won't always win. But the other piece too is, in the end, the championship team plays the staff, and so you can imagine who those signs are probably for with the kids there, but it's the kids versus the staff, and the kids get to participate in something. And we do this for hockey. Soccer was added later, but they've both been hits. Part of the reason we can't do basketball is the size just doesn't work well with sixth graders, although if the staff wanted to win all the time, maybe we should add that, but this is what we're doing with soccer and floor hockey. This was a kindness mural. What's neat about this is every one of those post-its is a kid saying what they believe is an identity with kindness for them, as well as our staff. And so everyone in the building got a post-it note, and they put what they believed kindness was on that note, and then we put it up in a mural as part of our kindness piece. Nacho Average Student Day, El Molino hooked us up with the nachas and salsa, and Quick Trip hooked us up with the drinks and the cheese, and this was pretty awesome, just to celebrate our kids' hard work. It was a huge hit, and you need to do this a little bit, especially when you're in March. February, March can be tough times in schools, and so give them, give kids something and excited about, or that they can be excited about. I Love to Read Month, this is, this is always a good day because by the time Mr. Wahlberg gets that haircut, he needs it, and so he grows his hair out for way too long, but then they, they give him a butch and he goes on with his life. And so Mr. Wahlberg is, we've done this for three or four years now, and it's kind of a neat experience. Math Masters, we have fifth and sixth. We compete very well in that. They work hard for about a month preparing for it, and then they go and compete over it. I think it's at Bethany over in Vancato. Rockin' Your Socks for World Down Syndrome Day, and this was just a cool picture of the kids. That is, that has become such a huge hit. The first year, few kids, then after we got going, it's probably 75 to 80% in our building, and I'm guessing the high school's probably even higher than that.
Yeah, the high school was really high this year.
Yeah, so pretty neat with that. Music in the schools, these are ukuleles that were purchased by PTO, and the kids are playing them, but from our music department, and so just kind of showing that music in the schools has a month as well. This was neat, if you heard about it. Now this looks cool, stopped. I didn't show you the video in real time because it is the most anticlimactic moment. I was so excited about this. So it's a, it's a food shortage month, and so that's why we did this, and so we're getting boxes of cereal for the food shelf, an awesome thing to give a food shelf because they can stay on the shelf for a while, and the $600 was great. But I was so excited about this Domino's, I thought it was going to be the greatest thing, and if we would watch that real time, it would take about a minute and a half to get through. It is the slowest Domino's. It's not like Domino's, and so friction's playing a role in that, it slowed everything up, but it looks great when you're looking at it from this end, and the kids were pretty excited, but all the kids are up there, and you're expecting to, just like that, and boom, boom. And I'm like, so you almost had to have an entertainer in front. This is our variety show, and so now more exposure to what kids do in high school, getting kids thinking about, maybe I want to be that. So we got to go over to that last week and watch those kids perform. Are you in that one?
I am.
Yeah. Can you see where you were?
Yeah, I'm not going to point it out.
All right. And then the fourth graders just getting ready for their concert on that same day for kids, and Darren, you might have been at that one. Did you go over to watch that?
That was amazing, they deserve an award.
Yeah, it was pretty good, huh? And so then we're getting close to the end. Earth Day, where we put together and kids are participating in that. You can keep rolling. This is, this is neat. We do a recess, just because of where we're at, we're on the trail. We have some kids that actually have over 75 miles that they've put in, and they get different awards for different, but every recess they go for a walk, and they get about a half mile a day up and back, but they've put together some pretty incredible amounts, but teaching kids that walking is important, exercise is important. This, I don't know if we can get it again, I got to talk to Brooke and Carrie about this, but we did this last year at Farm America, and it's, what I liked about this was, this is career day for kids, but when they went out there, they got to get hands-on with things, and it wasn't all, like, every time you go to career day, sometimes it's just engineer and doctor and those types of things. For this, it was a lot of like machinist opportunities, it's a lot of med tech, you'll see they're extracting DNA on the bottom there, and so they had lots of different things to expose kids to that they rarely get a chance to, and so that was a really good event for us, and I don't know if they're running it again.
May 25th again.
Yeah. And we're in.
We'll talk soon.
Okay, okay, all right. So this was really good, this is last year's picture, but we can keep rolling. Track and Field Day at the end of the year, we pray for good weather because if it's not, it can be a long day. If it is, it's a fantastic experience for our kids and families. Dare, and you can do two of these at once, but this is Dare Graduation, then Midwest comes over, and they celebrate with our kids and run activities for it, and so it's a nice connection with Midwest and our junior board. Camp Omega is going to be Camp Patterson this year. We are switching to Camp Omega partly because families were saying we want to get an overnight experience. For a lot of kids, this is their first overnight experience away from families and away from home. And so, and so we're going to Camp Omega just because they're set up to be able to handle that a little bit better. Camp Patterson was getting tough because it was all on our own staff, and so it was tough to actually do that and pull it off, and so we're really excited to see what they have, but an environmental learning experience for kids. And then end of the year activities, the tug-of-war ends up, the track and field, you see the teachers getting crowned, either the boot or the crown for who won the track and field day, and then those are probably some reading awards up on top there. Eagle Bluff kind of wraps up for a lot of them, the second experience away from home, that's a two-night experience that we've done for multiple years, moved from Wolf's Ridge to Eagle Bluff probably about 15 years ago. And then this is just something that we find important, like, in order for kids to, like, I feel so proud because I have a staff that actually understands that every one of them matters when they come, and so I put all of those folks up there that they all are a part of raising these kids, and so it's not just your licensed staff and your pairs that have exposure, but custodians and cooks, and I've got a custodian in a group of cooks that love to interact with kids, and they hand out more tickets probably than some of our teachers, and so it's been really exciting with the Blue Jay Way, and they support that, but it's all about building relationships so that when you do have to have hard conversations with kids, they trust you. And so I think we do a pretty nice job with that at WIS, so. Felt like that was pretty much a speed version of it, but how'd they do with time?
They're fine.
Okay, all right. So any questions? Edita, I think Dominic was in one of those too. I don't know if you saw it, I can't remember which one it was.
How many kids do that Eagle Bluff? Because that's in the summer now, right?
It's in, it's the first week out.
Yeah.
And so we're done with school like on a Friday, and then they go on, I think Wednesday, Thursday, Friday the following week. And we get probably, last year we had 145 kids, and I think we had 120 kids go.
Close to half a grade, not quite.
No, it's six.
No, no, no.
Oh, no, that's right. I'm thinking half, so a lot of them are at that grade.
About 80 to 90% go.
Okay.
It's amazing, and so, and generally we have around 90% signed up, and then a couple won't show up on the day, and they get cold feet or whatever it be in a way. But we try and make that to where people know that if you can't afford or need support with that, we'll help you. And so we don't want it to be a monetary issue why they're not going, but some folks are already on a trip somewhere, but we get, we get really good participation, even outside the year.
Yeah.
If that changed, I think, if we were down to 50%, I would start to consider maybe something else, because that's not the intent of it, it's you want to get as many kids there as possible, so, but it's been really good.
And this is the first year you're not doing Patterson, right?
We're not doing Patterson, but we're doing Omega. So Patterson went from being an overnight experience, probably when you guys went way back then, and so Omega is offering, and so we did some financials with it. Our Sacred Heart kids got Omega, and so half, not all our kids had a Camp Patterson. And so I talked to some folks over there, and I said, what is that experience like? Are they getting a good experience with the environmental education? And they have experts up there that are teaching the classes versus our teachers just becoming a bird, the bones and those types of things for a day. And so they said they really loved going to Omega, and they said it was, I said, let's try it, let's see what, we can always go back to Camp Patterson. So we're going to see. I don't know, I'm optimistic. I hope it goes well, and you'll be actually able to see it, because that's what I want to talk to folks that have had the experience of Patterson and Omega and see how they, how they feel about it, so. Any other questions or?
How, English as a second language, how many students are there, and where are they along? I mean, if they come to school as a kindergarten and are not knowing English at all, where are they at along the trail to be English, to be English speaking?
Tough question to answer because every kid is different, but if they come in kindergarten, they're going to be in good shape, it won't take long. I would say by the end of kindergarten year, they're going to be learning that and doing well. Kids that are, that come that are a little older, like high school and stuff, it takes a little bit longer to pick that up, but it's different for every kid, and we use the access test to see how far they're along and when we release them from the program. We have about, well, anytime during the year, we have some migrant students, and so we have anywhere in my school between 10 and 15 kids that are in that program. But it's a tough question to answer, Charlie, because I could say something, but it's not necessarily the truth, you know, it depends on the kid, of how long it takes. And actually probably more of an expert, that'd be a good question, I can ask my ELL teacher and say what, on average, and they could give you a better answer, so.
Do them, do them students tend to stay all the way through, through the senior year? Or what do you see there? Are they just a transitional student?
Well, we have less and less migrant students since I've been here. This is just, I'm not going to give you numbers, but I just have that feel, and I'm pretty accurate with that. So we have more kids that are staying year-round for one reason or another, but we still have some migrant students that come, and for our ELL students, I would say the majority of them, so of those 15 that I mentioned, 12 of them are not going to be migrant, and generally they do stay, you know, like when I'm looking at the populations that are graduating and walking across the stage, they're staying, but I can't give you an exact number on that, but I think it's positive to keeping them in the district.
It doesn't, it doesn't stand out any different than the rest of our student population in terms of how many students live and work here for how long.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your building switched to standards-based grading a couple years ago, so what are your thoughts on that, and how does that fit into like your overall vision and some of your And how does that fit into like your overall vision and some of your?
My thoughts are we still have a lot of work to do to educate parents. And so my assumption was as it kind of came through, partly that we'd have parents that were understanding kind of what that would be. But I think we still have, like in my vision statement, that's one of our areas that we need to spend more time with. Because I think parents are under the assumption that, well, it can't be motivating if it's not an A, B, and C. And I think we need to do a change in our thought process there to say, standards-based grading is trying to give parents the most specific information about where their kid is struggling versus they're just an A or B. And so, but it's not necessarily, I think the tendency is it's not a three, it's not success. And we have a three, two, one system. And it's not a three, it's not success. And what is a two and that type of thing? And so what we're trying to give parents is an idea that this would be an area that they, you know, if you have some time, you can work with them. Or as you progress up, next year's teacher is going to see that they're a one or a two in this area and they need more exposure to that concept. And it's harder to do that when it's an A, B, C grading system. And so that's why we've designed it for an elementary system. I think it becomes a lot more difficult when it gets up to secondary and I understand those issues that are there. There are some districts that have tried. But for us, it's about, our goal is getting kids to learn content and allowing, and communicating with parents exactly what they don't know. And so our job is to, I think there's panic where they haven't, they haven't done all these. And it's like, that's because we're at this point in the year or they may get it inspirally next year if we don't get to it. I don't know if I'm answering it, but I, we have to, we have to communicate and educate our parents more about what we're trying to accomplish with it. But part of the issue that I, I haven't had a lot of feedback to what I'm saying. I'm just, as I talk to my teachers, they're saying that I think there's a need there.
Do you think your kids, the students understand it?
I think students understand it, but students also, as they go through, need to figure out, because I've heard from a few people that it's easy as a parent to say, you're missing five assignments here and you're at a C. And if you do those five assignments, you'll be at an A. It's harder for a parent to say, you don't know this learning target. And I don't know for sure if there's three assignments that are pushing for that. So that's, that's the breakdown in communication that we got to get better with. And when we do get better at that, this is exactly what they're missing. I think it's going to aid parents to be what they want to be, which is I'm trying to help my kid. So I know what they're missing, but I don't know how to get them to do it. But the number one piece for a parent is, yeah, get your work done. And so like we have to communicate that part of how they can help them with that. Does that make sense at all? Yeah. So we're going to continue to work on that. And that kind of fall into our first vision area of connecting us with parents and families and stakeholders.
Okay.
Now that you've been the principal in that building for a while, how do you like the four, five, six age grouping?
I love it, but I've loved every building. Like I was high school before. But I, what I love about a four, five, six grouping is I feel like first, sixth grade's ready to go to that next level and they're shrugging us off essentially halfway through the year, if not earlier, where they're ready to have more independence. But I think it works as far as grade levels. But, so we have to overcome communication going from third to fourth of what their areas of growth need to be. But from a, from a standpoint of a group of kids that's in that category of dependent learning to independent learning, it's right on mark. Fourth grade is when you start to get the comprehension has to go up. And so the intervention kind of matches in pairs. It also is at a spot where kids are starting to have different types of social emotional needs. And so I love intermediate schools. And the one thing I will say is that as you look out there, there's more and more of them. Now, when we think about being able to bring in a K1, 2, 3, we've seen some buildings that are doing that. And I think you can maintain that feel within one building, one set. And so as we look at, you know, progressing forward, that would be, you know, 10 years down the line, what are we going to look like? I wouldn't be fearful of going K6. But I do think from a standpoint right now, our intermediate grouping is, works really well. Yeah. I love working with that age kids. They're two, they're not old enough to where they've given up. There's still a chance to save hand, if that makes sense to people. They still a chance to believe, that they can believe that they can be the student that they want to be or whatever they want to be in life. Sometimes when you get a little further along, it's harder to do that, but still possible. Did I answer Dave kind of where you're going?
Thank you.
All right, maybe time for one more question if we have anything. Otherwise, I think we're good. Thank you, John, for coming in. Appreciate all the information. All right, we'll continue then with the superintendent report.
Very good. Well, thank you. So tonight I'm going to talk about really a couple of different things and relatively briefly, because these are things you're really in the, in the know on already, but I kind of want us to update what we've got going on here. So in the strategic planning process, as you know, you know, we're at the end of our five years for our current plan. So we're starting that administrative process of moving into our next strategic plan. And what we've accomplished so far is we did, we did what was called the environmental scan. And so we worked together as an administrative team and we talked about, you know, what's on the edge? What's emerging? What are we seeing in education coming down to influence us? That's going to be something that's going to impact, we'll seek in education in general over the next several years. Then we looked at what's established? What's our standard work? What do we do? Good, bad, or otherwise? What is it that we do, right? This just happens here. And we tried to talk about, this is really hard for education people, talking about what's ebbing? What needs, what's kind of at the back end of its life cycle that needs to be really thinking about? Does that leave our plate? Does that move? We don't do that anymore. You know, the example I always gave was when I taught kindergarten, I loved my Fall Apple unit. That was a great unit. There wasn't time for it when you started to think of all the things that you had to get done. So I had to, and it wasn't in the standard. So I had to let that particular lesson go. So you think about that, about what needs to leave the system as part of that environmental scan, what's happening? So we, then we developed some themes as a leadership team about where we could take these and how we use these themes for planning. The next step of the process, which we just did this last Monday, was we used the survey, which you probably had all seen through the all-staff email and then some of you through parents or other conversations about that, about what's your desired daily experience in Will Seek a Public School? So if you're a student, staff, or family member, a parent in Will Seek Public Schools, what do you expect and hope your desired daily experience to be in our schools? And so we looked at those. We had about, well, it was, it was nearly 1,000 responses between all three groups that we worked through. And we worked with TeamWorks, as I mentioned, the executive coaching company helps support that consultant. And we worked through that on Monday. And we started developing themes, what we're seeing from, from our staff, from our students, from our parents, what are we hearing about their desired experience? And we came up with some themes and the themes are not anything overly surprising. We want our kids to be safe. We want our kids to feel welcomed. We want, as a staff, I want to feel valued. I want to feel like my voice matters. Fortunately, these mirror a lot of things we talked about as administrative team. We talked about some of the things we're working on right now. So next steps for that will be in the next few weeks, we'll be working to operationalize those ideas and think about, what does that mean? What are we going to do with those things? And create an operational plan, which then leads to the vision card. And then in the summertime, we'll bring that to you as a board and say, here's the vision card, here's the operational plan we've talked about as administration. Now, as a board, how does that work into yours, creating the next strategic plan? What does that mean? Here's the, all the information you have working through that. And our consultant with TeamWorks will come. We're trying to find, nail down the date. It's going to be either the May work session or the May regular meeting that she's going to come and also just introduce herself and kind of give you the five minute update of, here's what we've done so far. So then when she comes back and works with you in the summer, it's a familiar face again as well, moving forward that process for that. So moving along with the strategic planning process. As far as the preliminary budget update goes, very, very positive in the sense that we're making progress. What we talked about the last work session, there's been nothing that's significantly changed in terms of what we're making for budget assumptions, enrollment changes, revenue increases from the state. Charlie, I will be able to speak a little bit to it in the committee reports, but Charlie and Grant and I had an opportunity to be at the legislature yesterday. And what we're hearing is very consistent with what we have built into, built into our budget for next year. So we are pleased. It's never fun to make a rightsize in terms of the staff you have and the operations you do. And we'd love to be able to provide every possible thing we could. But at the same time, you have to be responsible with your dollars. And so we are still planning on presenting to the finance committee here beforehand, but then also to the full board in June, that preliminary budget that is, that is balanced and growing the fund balance maybe minimally. We don't, we're not going to be, have a huge surplus because we, we want to still be able to provide the resources we have for students. But heading in that, settling into that range, so our fund balance remains where it is. So tonight, in the action items, you'll be asked to just take a few, pass or consider a few resolutions with some of our teaching staff, both probationary staff, and then some proposal for unrequested leave of absence for their staff, as we talked about. And I explained that process in the, in the update. I also can share more with you. We'll get that action item if you have questions about it. But, and then moving forward, some of the non-licensed adjustments will come in the, in the next few meetings as we settle down, settle out some of those seniority moves and things like that, as we talked about in the update. So looking forward to rightsizing and having that budget ready to go so that moving forward, then we can continue to, to provide the great services that we have for students. And as I've talked about multiple times, but it bears repeating, the rightsizing and adjustment is really an important term because we are not reducing any program or services for students. We're going to have to rethink how we deliver some of those services, but they're going to be available for students as they, as they see, which is different than a budget cut, which is, we would like to be able to provide the service, we just can't, so we're not going to do X or whatever it might be, the example might be. In hindsight, if you, if you go back three months and we happen to know how it would play out, which you never do, but if you could do that, this would actually mirror what we do on any given year anyway. We really would, we always rightsize our budget to our afterward thing. In January, we thought maybe it was going to have to be more significant of a, of a move. And so we were preparing our staff, our board, our community for potentially having to make more significant adjustments. And we fortunately, the way things have looked, have worked, have not had to do that. So we are, we are moving forward with that process. And one of the goals that I know I'm held accountable for with our, with my goals, but also important to the board is that we're financially responsible and we're producing a balanced budget. And we're accomplishing that. We're on the track for that, as we asked. And then the two things that I would be, are not related to either of those topics, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention it. The band trip for next year is shaping up. And so they're looking at, being prepared to go to New York again next year. Choir. Choir, uh?
The band just went somewhere, right?
They just went to Florida.
Yeah. So next year it'll be choir.
It's choir.
Okay, sorry. Sorry, Jason's email said banned, so sorry about that. Or maybe I read it wrong. Anyway, they're working through that now. So parents will be hearing information about cost and things coming up soon. And so just for your awareness as a board, that's process is getting rolling. And then, and then as they get closer in the fall to the planning process, we'll do the formal approval process of that trip. As we will think about how we do that in, in August for all of our regular trips that we do, we move forward with that. And then as I mentioned in the update today, yesterday, but then also in the email today, although the shoes will be, will be hard to fill, we have had a candidate accept the business, director of business services position. So that's positive for our district in the sense of, of having a qualified and strong candidate to attempt to keep the ball rolling. But I'm confident that Mr. Mullin will do just fine in that regard. Because of the cycle of our board meetings, that'll come to you in the middle, at the February, sorry, at the May regular meeting, unless he needs to do something faster with his current employer, I will ask the board to consider a short business meeting after our work session in May to approve his contract so that he can then make his decision at his current employer with that. But the plan will be a July 1 start for him with some days in June to be able to work with Elizabeth to make for a smooth transition.
Great. Any questions for superintendent? All right, moving on then to our reports from Elizabeth.
Thank you for your time this evening. I have just a couple of items to cover and then absolutely open to any questions that you may have regarding the board agenda. We do have expenditure and revenue comparisons as of the month of March. And so just a couple of things to mention with the two reports. So the 2022, 2023 situation is reflective of our final budget that was approved last month. So just wanted to make sure that I did point that out. Everything is tracking as we would have anticipated, very much in alignment with the previous year. So nothing that's outstanding in my eyes, making everything is moving along just as we would have anticipated according to our budget. Kind of a little bit on fiscal year '24 as we're looking ahead. We are all continuing to advocate, since we're still in session of just as much local control as possible, just recently reached out to some of our representatives. So they're continuing to hear from us in a positive manner, right? Of just things that we do want them to continue to consider before any finalized details are decided. So just like I said, continuing to advocate for all districts locally, as much local control as possible as well as just continuing to advocate for various funding sources moving forward, as Stephanie mentioned. Everything is, is positive from what we're hearing at this point in time. Next month, just to be a little heads up, what we'll be looking at. So now with the time, again, that we're working on fiscal year '24, so next month's meeting will include proposals, for examples like fiscal year '24 fees, fiscal year '24 stipends, hourly rates that are not driven necessarily by contract. And so the clocks kind of what we're working on right now to make sure that we're being competitive and staying in alignment with our local entities. And we will bring those to you next meeting. And then the other thing I just wanted to call out specifically is you see the gifts and donations. We were notified this year of a new scholarship that we will be entrusted with, which is extremely exciting. All of the donations are wonderful, but since that was a very significant amount, I want to make sure that I call that out. So the Thelma Rice State did donate a significant amount of funds for scholarships for our students. So again, this will be a trust that we hold, so we'll, we'll record this in our fund base. They have been very flexible on what this looks like. So we're actually working with the high school office right now, the counselors, on what those parameters may be. This will be an award for next year. We will not be able to award it yet this year, just having received the funds and not make sure no of those parameters are alike. And it will be similar to how all of our other scholarships were awarded, is that it will be based on the interest that is earned that year. So just wanted to call it, make sure I mention that and if anybody had questions on what that donation could be. Any questions to me at all?
I don't think so, but thank you for pointing out that scholarship. That was a, that's a really cool thing to see donated, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, moving on then to committee and board member reports. Darren, you want to start us off?
I can start us off.
Thank you.
Committees, that's it, through policy and safety insurance policy, just went through some basic policies, nothing too crazy there. And safety and insurance, nothing too crazy brought up, just your basic insurance needs that we have in the district and just some miscellaneous things around our facilities uh, our facilities that, you know, every day we're in.
All right, thank you. Charlie?
Well, I've been in three different ones, um, the first one I'm talking about was the, uh, the arena committee that met here on April 11th, um, uh, the revenue there is stable, um, they did some sprinkler pipe repairs, you know, there's always some, because of the humidity in the building, and the building is, um, getting some, needs some TLC, so they continue to talk about that, and so, but nothing, nothing, uh, earth shattering there. Uh, Eric said yesterday, we went through with us, uh, to the Capitol, spent the day at the Capitol, uh, visiting with, I think we had talked with five different legislators and, uh, from both sides of the aisle, and I think we're, I think we were pretty happy with what we're hearing there, you know, and, uh, there are some, there are some little, some little things on discipline and stuff like that, that they're, they're, they're trying to incorporate into the law, that maybe it creates some issues that, that are undesirable, but, but anyhow, it was, it was a very positive day about that, and, uh, so, and then, like Theron said, we had the, uh, the policy board here, uh, meeting here a couple, uh, a week ago, and, and guess what I was, we were talking about that, uh, policy 503, and if anyone's interested, and maybe Eric can say some more about that, but policy, if any, if you want to find what the school policies are, you just go to the website and go to school board, and under school board, they got board policies, then you can read them up, whatever, whatever it is, this is how the school is run, it's run on policies, so. And the reason I brought up 503, 503 is, is about student attendance, and Terry Morrow, one of our people over at the MSBA, had a little blurb about it, and he said, "In, in light of these considerations, it may be reasonable for our school board to review policy 503 and consider whether academic penalties are the appropriate response to unexcused absences. When the school board or its policy review committee include an educational lens when adopting, advising, reviewing policies, the school district can elevate school student learning and ensure that disciplinary measures are reasonable and not counterproductive." So, that's why, that's probably why policy 503 got brought up again, and, and we can probably talk a little bit more about that later on, but, but, uh, I thought that was interesting, that's an interesting, it's an interesting policy, and I'm, I'm big on people having to go to work, they have to go to work, if you want to find success in this life, you have to go to work every day, and it starts in kindergarten, and so that's why, that's why policies such as this student attendance are so important, so, anyhow, that's my, that's my report, so.
Okay, thank you.
Not long, but I don't.
All right, Lindsay and Eddie.
Why don't you start out?
Um, so I'll start out with the congratulations to our, our two speech team competitors who just recently, both of them placed at their section, our section meet last week, or competition last week, and then also to our three visual arts competitors who all, they had a competition yesterday, and they're all advancing to sections, so, which is pretty cool. And then congrats to Lucas Vasquez and Daniel Kohler, because they're going to BPA Nationals next week, so wish them luck there, hopefully they do great, it's in California, so that's really cool. Um, and then, our junior board is, is having a hygiene drive going on right now, it's through the 30th, be sure to donate any, like, toothbrush, toothpaste, anything sort of hygiene in the library, just so we can get out to as many people as possible.
All right, our spring sports are doing really well, we have, well, girls golf got canceled today, but we're back at it tomorrow in Mankato. Um, the boys tennis team, I believe, is undefeated right now, which is really awesome, and the track team is doing really well, and our baseball team, I think, also has not lost a game yet, so we're really excited for our, oh, we're super excited for our sports teams. Um, the variety show was last weekend, and it was really fun, and it was, it was a fun show to do, and so we're just thanking the community for all their support and, um, attending that. And then, Mamma Mia rehearsals are in full swing, um, and so that's on May 4, 5, 6, and 7, and then you can order tickets, um, on the Hometown app, on the Wasika Drama Department website, or I believe you can get them at the door, but I highly recommend choosing your seat beforehand, you get like the whole map, like, it's, it's so professional. And then, the student council is also doing five days of service, so, um, on Saturday they're cleaning the parks, um, along with the MHS, and, um, we're putting up memorial flags, helping with that on, on Memorial Day, and we're doing teacher appreciation, so breakfast, probably some kind of poster, I believe, is what they're working on now. And we're still continuing with the Blue Jay Buddies with Hartley, and still trying to build that a little bit more, seeing what it might look like, um, next year too, building onto it. And then, oh, and then state FFA, we have, I think I counted 14, people are moving on to the state FFA competition, and some of them are doing more than one, um, event, so that's really awesome.
Are there going to be four performances of the play?
Yes.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday evenings?
Um, Saturday, so it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday evenings, and then Sunday at 2:00 PM.
Sunday at 2:00, okay.
And where do you donate for the hygiene drive?
The Wasika Public Library.
The public libraries, okay.
Well, there's a couple other distribution points, but that's our main.
Okay, that's good for me. Thank you. Alyssa?
Um, finance, I'm not going to try to go there, I'll let Elizabeth and Eric kind of run with that. Um, I don't think I'd have much to add there. Community ad registration is open for summer sessions, so there's a lot of good programs there. Um, and then insurance and safety, just kind of piggybacking on what Theron said, um, the staff is encouraged to use the online resources for the health insurance, there's a lot of good stuff there, so encourage that. And then, the fire marshal had their three-year inspection this last week, so they were floating through the buildings, so.
Thank you.
Um, nothing new here, um, facilities, personnel, finance, um, nothing that hasn't been covered already, so.
Same for me.
Okay. Um, yeah, and we did have personnel, but really, I think we've already talked about it, because the big thing was the process for hiring the, the director for business services, and that's done, so that's good, um, and staffing adjustments based on budget, but.
Can I ask one question for the, whoever went up to the legislature yesterday? Did any of the legislators that you talked with talk about any of the possible changes to teacher licensing?
No.
No?
No.
Do you have any idea where you think that might end up, or is it hard to say?
Um, it's not going, it's, it's hard to say, but right now it's not a hot topic item that's getting much, much attention, so, which, which leads me to believe it's not going to impact our work a lot, yeah.
Um, and then I did, I did have a PG and D meeting where we just discussed, um, professional development for next year, and, and what they want the back of schools, um, stuff to look like especially, so, um, so that's all I really had, I think. Moving on then to our recognitions and positive board feedback, you want to just start us off again?
Sure.
Awesome.
Went to the fourth grade music concert, that was pretty awesome.
Good.
Last week, so, I did get, Mr. Brendan put on a pretty good show with kids, kept them all, uh, corralled very nicely. Um, I did take a walk through the high school, uh, Jake Nelson walked me through, showed me, I haven't been through that school, you know, I've been there for events and whatnot, but really haven't been through all the back doors and everything since I graduated there, so, it was pretty nice to see and just understanding the uses and everything, and, you know.
Cool.
Yeah, it was good.
Good. Charlie?
Uh, I guess I'd like to just highlight the variety show, enjoyed it, it was a fun evening, uh, uh, kids did excellent, excellent, excellent work, you know, so, and I've got my tickets bought at the Mamma Mia already, so, there you go, so, otherwise, the athletic events, the athletic events have been, have been much going on here, so, so anyhow, okay.
Um, I would just like to recognize all the WIS students and faculty and staff there. Um, we had two days in a row, um, last week where, um, we were going to them with the band, or they came to us for the variety show, and it was just really awesome seeing all of them be excited about, um, our fine arts department, so that was really fun.
Um, so, next, it's coming up next week, and eat, like, very soon, next month is graduation preparation, so I just want to keep everyone, especially like Dr. Miller and everyone who deals with all that, in our, in our minds, just wish them well, because it's a really stressful month for them.
All right, thank you.
Um, I've spent some time at Hartley this last month volunteering Mrs. Schultz's class, and that's, it's a hard time of year, they're doing MCA testing, and it's either raining or nice out, and I don't know which is, is worse, when they're, (laugh) spring fever, but those teachers are doing a great job with the kids.
Cool, thank you.
Um, Mr. Hartmeyer kind of talked about this, but, um, the, um, both at Hartley and WIS, they did collect cereal boxes for the food shelf, and, um, they both collected over 500 boxes at each school, um, so I want to thank the staff, Chris Lapitas and Michelle Creed, I'm kind of headed that up at Hartley and at, uh, um, the intermediate school, so I want to thank them and the staff and all the kids and all that, and I happened to be at Hartley when they did the Domino thing, and he's exactly right, it probably took almost two minutes, the, the small gym at Hartley, you know, and all the kids were in it and the staff, and they were just screaming for two minutes, because this thing was just slowly going back and forth like that, but it was kind of cool. But I thought it was really neat that between two schools, um, they collected over a thousand boxes of cereal for the food shelf, so thanks to them for, for doing that.
Cool.
Oh, one more thing, we beat New Ulm the other night in New Ulm at baseball, and that hardly ever happens, so, as long as you brought it up, I'm gonna, uh, second that.
Well, I would like to say thank you, I saw at least two, you know, boutiques or shops in a, in a town that are offering the flowers for promo, uh, promotion, for prom, right? It's, it's not this weekend, but the weekend after, I would like to say thank you, and also, I have kids in track, and I would like to say thank you to the coaches and stuff, because those meets are long. And it's, yeah, it's just a lot of, you know, running around and ensuring that kids are okay, and I really appreciate it.
Yes. Well, I'm kind of piggybacking off of that, I just want to say kudos to all of the athletes, coaches, and honestly, parents who are enduring this spring in sports, so, I mean, just the everyday, who the heck knows what you're doing, and I don't know, and the constant, I'd probably shout out to Joe Headivar, I'm sure the constant rescheduling of the events and stuff too, so, has been a tricky spring, and, and it's, but it's still fun to see everyone out there, um, being active and enjoying their sport, so.
All right, are we ready to move on to action items? Okay, um, can I get a motion for item A?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution of acceptance of received gifts and donations.
Second.
First and a second, um, any discussion? Other than thank you to everyone for these donations, these are all really awesome, so. All right, so since this is a resolution, this requires a roll call, Caitlin, if you could call the roll.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yeah.
Adina Mansfield?
Yes.
Theron Kruger?
Yes.
Charlie Creed?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. All right, uh, motion is approved unanimous. Um, can I get a motion for item B?
I'll make a motion to approve the milk bid timeline.
Second. Perfect timing.
Well, whoever, yes, I'll let Caitlin pick, um, we have our first and a second, um, any discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Uh, can I get a motion for item C?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll motion to approve the disposal of the food service equipment.
Second.
Uh, first and a second, any discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item D?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Team CAD, I mean, defended meals agreement.
First and a second, any discussion? All right, uh, hearing none, I will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Uh, can I get a motion for item E?
I'll make a motion to approve the spring 2023 track fundraiser proposal.
First and a second, any discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And then, um, give me a second here. And for this one, I would, I would say name, right? So just read, all right, so I'll make a motion, um, to approve the resolution proposing to place Laurie Putzy on unrequested leave of absence, be it resolved by the school district, or school board of independent school district number 829 as follows, that it is proposed that Laurie Putzy, a teacher of said school district, be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits, effective at the end of the 2022-2023 school year on June 30, 2023 pursuant to, um, MS 122A dot 40 subdivision 10 in Article 11, Section 5 of the current master agreement between the school district and the exclusive representative. Uh, that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding the proposed placement on requested, on, on requested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits as provided by law, and said notice shall include a date for hearing if requested and be in substantially the following form. Do I need to read the whole form? No, okay. Um, is that all?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that is my motion, can I get a second?
Second.
A second from Dave? And, uh, just a reminder, this is, this is a proposal, so things, um, can still change.
Right, so she has the rights that she has, but also as things change in the next month, the, uh, next resolution, which would be to complete the action, would be the next board meeting, should nothing change.
Yep. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Need a roll call on this one.
Oh, that's right.
Yep.
Thank you. Caitlin, could you call a roll?
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Adina Mansfield?
Yes.
Theron Kruger?
Yes.
Charlie Creed?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. All right, motion carries unanimous. Um, moving on then to item G, and I will make a motion to approve resolutions to act on nonrenewal, uh, nonrenewal of probationary teaching contracts as presented, um, be it resolved by the school district of independent school district number 829, that pursuant to Minnesota statutes 122A dot 40 subdivision 5, that the teaching contract of Kristen Barnes, Brianna Barn, find Teresa Dickinson, and Marley Rohr, um, is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2022-2023 school year. Do I need to read the next part, is that, or second paragraph?
Second paragraph, yeah.
Yeah, uh, be it further resolved that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding termination and nonrenewal of, of their contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be in substantially the following form, so. All right, did you make a second? Yeah, thank you, so we have a first and a second, and again, a resolution, so we need a roll call, um, please just vote after Caitlin calls a roll.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Adina Mansfield?
Yes.
Theron Kruger?
Yes.
Charlie Creed?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. All right, uh, motion carries unanimous. I'm glad those were short resolutions, to read, I mean. Um, all right, can I get a motion for item H?
I make a motion to approve disposal of lunchroom, uh, lunchroom tables.
Can I ask a quick question on?
Can we, can we get the motion, then we can have discussion, yep. So we have a first.
A second.
Um, Alyssa has the second, and now, yeah, any discussion?
Yeah, no, I just, I didn't know much detail on it, so that's what I wanted to ask about, they're just outdated, broke, or out, I'd.
Yeah. Yeah, they're just.
We were able, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, we were able to purchase some new tables through our federal funding to help with spacing, so that's, that's the driver of, of this, so.
Okay.
Awesome, all right, any further discussion or questions?
Just interesting fact, the reason why that's a separate item than food service equipment is because one's in Fund 2, one's in Fund 1. In case you any thought that was interesting, why, why would you not just put all the equipment in one, that's why.
Well, and it's, yeah, it's, it's, is it, is it food service or is it building, so yeah.
Right.
Yep. All right, um, if there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And can I get a motion for item I?
I'll make a motion to approve the review of policies.
Second.
We have a first and a second, um, and these are policies 101.1, 102, 103, 104, 203, 203.1, 203.2, 203.5, and 503, and these are all, um, just reviewed.
Right, and, and the only thing I would just expand upon, as, as Charlie mentioned earlier, 503, we did review that as a policy committee, and we found that there is substantial accountability in that policy, we do make it very clear that that's important to us, and it's a requirement of being in schools to come to school, you can't, you can't, you know, function if you're not going to be here, but at the same time, we don't have some of the things that Mr. Morrow in his article was concerned about, about the black and white, if you miss school or unexcuse, this is going to be your penalty, or that's going to be your penalty, our policy is written such that the school handbooks can work with our students to make sure that we intervene, whether that's truancy, whether that's a failing grade, all the things that could happen, but it's not a if this, then that, which is what he was concerned about, policies, um, being written towards, so, uh, we felt as a committee that our policy is strong and well-written, and that's why it's being presented as a review with no changes.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, I will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous, and that brings us to the end of our action items. Um, just upcoming items and reminders, uh, our next work session for the board is May 4th, our next regular meeting is Thursday, May 18th, um, and then, uh, just a reminder, our, our next professional development date is Friday, May 5th, so students do not report to school on that day, so. Anything else we need to know about? We're good? All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight, sweetie.
Second.
First and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.